7:30 on March 15th, this is the Brainerd City Council. Call to order. Administrator Bergman, will you call the roll?
Absolutely. Stingline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Takes a while, he's in Florida.
Yeah, no kidding. O'Day.
Here.
Stunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved, Johnson.
Second, Pritchett.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll call it.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, O'Day.
Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Aye.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, and Mike O'Day, I don't want any of these delayed votes.
Suddenly Councilman O'Day is missing.
I don't want you searching for your un-mute button.
Yeah.
I remember fine, the consent calendar, this is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and won't be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second, Johnson.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, we are underway. Item six, Community Member of the Month, Mayor Bedeau.
Yes. I don't have it in front of me. Mayor apologizes, his thing has went down.
Need some help?
I got it.
O'Day, will you help the mayor out?
He can't find the mute button.
I was just giving Kevin Stunick a ton of grief over his inability to use a computer and then I click on my thing and it froze. All right, so, Community Member of the Month, we obviously have been welcoming community members and giving pats on the back or praise for the wonderful things they've been doing in our area. And this month, we would like to give our award to Brenda Billman-Arnt, who is one of the driving forces behind the Destination Downtown Brainerd Coalition. And I don't know if you've met Brenda at all, but Brenda is one of the people that I have listed in the last handful of meetings as a doer. And she's one of those people that, in the small amounts of interactions I've had with her in a couple of committees, just hits the ground running and comes with packets of information. She is a person that likes to do her homework and likes to come prepared and referred to our Parking Commission as "very interesting", which I never thought I would think anyone would ever say. I'm not going to read everything that's on here, but, you know, she's a business owner downtown. She was the winner of the Destination Downtown and moved her business into the area and since then has really taken up the torch and has been getting involved with that group, as well as many other groups, including Brainerd Restoration and of course, like I said, the Parking Commission as well. There's a great quote in here from Mary Divine Johnson, who said, "Brenda is a rare precious combination of being an idea generator, someone who rolls up her sleeves and does the work. Brainerd is better because of Brenda." And I think that says more than anything. This is just a community member that exemplifies what this award is for and not just for what she does for businesses down there, but what she's actually done to stepping up and being a part of our city as well. So, congratulations to Brenda Billman-Arnt, and I'm sure I'm saying that wrong, the Community Member of the Month. That's your cue to applause, yes.
Thank you, Brenda, for all your hard work. Next up is item seven, Council Committee Report, 7A, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we do have three items on our agenda, but we did actually add one, so we have a fourth item on the agenda. Sorry, I apologize, I didn't add that in the beginning. Do you want me to add that now?
It's okay.
It's okay?
It's on there.
It's on there, okay. So, first item is a request to approve Brainerd and Crow Wing County Public Transit Request for Proposals for Third-Party Operations Services. And we, as a committee, are pushing to move forward with that.
Second.
So I so move.
Second.
So this is basically an agreement that has to be revisited every few years. It's a contract for a third party for our 10 buses that we help people around the town with. They've come up with some proposals last week and we are going to move forward with what we are asking. And if anybody has any questions about that, we have Paul and we have Tad Erickson, who are attending those meetings. Otherwise.
Okay, hearing no questions, the motion is to move forward with the proposal, request for proposals. On note, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, please, that motion passes, please proceed.
Item number two is a request to approve cost share agreement with Crow Wing County for the improvement 21-04 2021 Street Striping Project, and I so move.
Second.
This is another, it's a biannual project that we have to revisit every couple of years. Basically, the costs of the street stripings, it comes in right around that $20,000 mark, so nothing out of the ordinary for this one.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, please, that motion passes, please proceed.
Item number two is a request to approve cost share agreement with Crow Wing County for the improvement 21-04 2021 Street Striping Project, and I so move.
Second.
This is another, it's a biannual project that we have to revisit every couple of years. Basically, the costs of the street stripings, it comes in right around that $20,000 mark, so nothing out of the ordinary for this one.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Item number three is a request to approve downtown crosswalk painting plan, and the motion from committee was to move forward with the approval of renderings one and two of the street strip, or crosswalk painting project bordering Ninth Street to Fifth Street, Fifth Street to Maple Street. And basically, this is two renderings because it is state aid streets and local streets have different requirements. So, that is our motion.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. You're going to leave, yep, Mr. Pritchett.
We're also leaving Seventh and Laurel open, as some area artists might be able to do something special on that.
Yes, we are open to something unique and different from our local artists at that main intersection of downtown.
Any further discussion? Yes, Gabe.
I got to say, I really like this, I like how fast it's come together, I think the water towers look cool. I am a little disappointed, we didn't get any rainbow crosswalks because the citizens of Brainerd have been passionate about rainbows for the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, we got to hear about that a lot.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yep.
Johnson.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, item number four, Mr. O'Day.
Yes, the fourth added item was the bids approval and trying to award a contract for the streets, parks addition to the Streets Garage. Motion coming out of committee is to award the contract to North Sun in the amount of $504,553 and authorizing executing the proper signatures on the contract documents. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Pritchett, any discussion?
Basically, North Sun got the lowest bid, Mr. President, so they got the motion.
Thank you, Mr. O'Day. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, Chairman O'Day, anything else?
It did come in a little bit, okay, no, yeah, go ahead.
You want to tell us a little bit about where you're at? We can mute you.
If you want me to, I can.
Item, next up, item 7B, Personal Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have four items on the agenda tonight. The first one is the approval, the authorization to hire one community service officer, and staff will provide employment details when available, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick, Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, we had a CSO officer retire, or move on in January, and we have another one who's going to be moving on in May, so we're just keeping the roster up full, so we can keep the CSOs on the street.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the next item is to authorize updating the police officer eligibility list, and the motion is to authorize the Civil Service Commission to establish a new police officer eligibility list, and I so move. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman Johnson. Thank you, our previous list is almost depleted, and we're hoping we can have two of the officers off of that list be hired on full time, and that will still leave us with three openings, so we're updating the list. And the timing is right, because I, young police officer, just graduating school here in May, so we're going to update the list right now.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this one's a little bit more confusing, I may ask for help from David on it, but I'll start with the motion and then I'll try to explain.
Before you make the motion, did Mr. Jed Linsky get to speak?
Mr. Jed Linsky did get the opportunity to speak, he thought David handled it quite well and didn't want to say any, I don't know if he, I told him he didn't need to come here.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
So he's not here. So, do you want the motion, or you want me to give background, what do you?
As long as he got to speak, you can do the motion whenever you're ready.
Okay, so the motion is to approve Mr. Jed Linsky's request for a refund and direct staff to work with Mr. Jed Linsky and the county to figure out what the actual appropriate refund amount for tax years payable 2012 through 2020 is, and come back to the council, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick, go ahead and tell us what's going on here.
Okay, so what we have here is, I think most of us remember when Mr. Jed Linsky came and he was in the urban service district and he wanted to be added to the rural service district like all of his neighbors are. Well, if you see this map here, he bought his house in 1990, and his house was on parcel 41330716 in the rural service district. When the county got GIS mapping in and around 2011, they figured out that his house was built on a different parcel about 150 feet south of the parcel he owned. So he had to actually buy the neighboring parcel, because his house that was constructed in the 80s was built so far. So anyway, he was in the rural service district up until 2011, then when he got bumped onto that parcel that the house actually sits on, he got moved into an urban service district, and we thought it'd be fair to refund the difference, because for all intents and purposes, he was still in the rural service district.
Excellent. Any further discussion?
Just a question, were we just refunding it for the two years?
Refunding it for all of the years, he paid both, so it was 2012 through 2020, it'll be $4,000 or $5,000, it'll be the refund.
Thank you, any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm scrolling down, and we have the 2022 capital equipment and facility budget. There was no action here, we had some good discussion. If you would allow, I'd like Connie to give the full council kind of a five-minute recap of where we are.
Absolutely, thank you. Finance Director Hillman.
So included in the packet, there was a memo that included the 30-year capital equipment and facility plans for the working funds, the 30-year capital equipment plan for the fire equipment, and we strictly keep that, just as administratively, we keep it separate for the fire advisory board, but it is the city's plan and it is the city's assets, but we just keep it separated. We also had a portion of the 30-year capital plan for the enterprise funds, and a comparison from what staff was planning for 2022 while preparing the 2021 budget, and currently what staff has recommended for 2022. That's about on page, Sean, that comparison is starting on page 106. Also, in the staff's memo, we had the, kind of the history of capital planning. As far as to my knowledge, the city's always had a five-year capital plan, but it wasn't really looked at or used very much, because we got so far behind on capital due to budget's constraints. A 30-year capital plan definitely helps us to capture those items that need to be placed every 15, 20, or 25 years. We have the general comments on the 30-year capital plan, kind of what we talked about last time. The 30-year capital plan, the biggest difference between what staff was proposing in 2021 versus what we currently have, the biggest difference is probably coming from the facilities. Our city engineer Sandy really went through the plan and looked at those things that we had already done, that were still being counted in the plan, and then he grouped projects that were liked together, so if we're going to do an exterior of a project, we're going to do the exterior whether or not it's 15 to 20 years old, or if it's 10 to 15 years old, we're going to book those and do it at the, at one time. So he planned it out better than before, we were taking, okay, this is what's left in this five-year period and dividing it by however many years were left. So we definitely did that. One thing that came up in our discussion was the cold storage facility. If you recall, when we were looking at the, at the parks, or, I mean, excuse me, at the street facility, there was cold storage for some of the police vehicles. At the time, we were said, no, we don't need a building for that. As we went along with planning for 2021, the chief at the time said, you know what? We really should have some of these buildings, or some of these vehicles that we have in our possession, under a roof. And so we did put in the cold storage facility late in the 2022 budget as part of the 2021 planning. So it's something, we're looking for staff, or for council input to see if you agree with the items that are on the docket for 2022, or if we need to revisit something.
Any questions? Yes, Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Aldrich Bevins, sir, Mr. Chair. The cold storage facility is, if you remember, they asked us last fall if we, they could use one acre of city land and only put up a $16,000 chain link fence, and that's all they're ever going to need for storage of automobiles. Well, here we are, six months later, and it's not just a $16,000 fence. It is also a $200,000 garage, and everybody on the council at the time knew it was already a $200,000 garage, but we were assured it wouldn't be needed. So I kind of, I kind of scolded them downstairs, but I think I'll be bringing a policy forward on capital planning that doesn't allow staff to administratively add new facilities to the city without council recognition or council approval. So, so this doesn't happen again. But it is a necessary, it is an absolutely necessary building, so I'm not saying we should even question it, except for just question how it was put in.
Thank you. Any further discussions or comments or questions of Finance Director Hillman? Yes, Engineer Sandy.
I figured this was probably the best time to bring this up. With the transit third-party contractor right now, they have a lot of issues finding, it's part of their duty to find storage for our 10 buses that are our capital assets. One of the things that we were considering is utilizing our contract with the state of Minnesota to finance a building for storage of our buses, and this site was one that we were, you know, it's very, very early to talk about this, but I think it would be prudent for us to maybe sit down with a committee of council members so we can utilize our contract with the state and the FTA to construct and finance a garage for our transit buses and get it fully funded by our contract with the state. And so, with the talk about the cold storage facility and that site, it might serve a dual purpose in the future. And so I would like to possibly set up some sort of subcommittee that we can look at this in detail and possibly come up with a plan for a future bus storage facility utilizing our contract with the state for public transit. So it's just something I want to bring out there right now, maybe get something put together that we can start talking about it.
I've got an idea on a committee that can help you. Right?
The Personnel and Finance.
It's all about the money, isn't it? I mean, who's going to be against the bus thing if the state pays for it? So it's going to be making it happen financially. I think it belongs there. I don't think, I don't think even Chairman Johnson, with his previous comments, was against the storage. I think it was a procedural thing, correct? So, I think this is a great idea. So, thank you. Anything else, Paul? Okay, any other comments on the budget? Nope, then that is no action item. Thank you, Gabe, thank you, Connie, thank you, the rest of the staff, for starting on this early, this is great. I've sat in this chair for many, many years and never did as good a job as Gabe Johnson is on the budgeting. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. We're done? Are we done? End of report? Thank you very much. We will now move on to item eight, unfinished business. We have committee resignations. Ed Mank, Economic Development Authority, is our motion to accept.
So moved.
Motion by Pritchett, second by Stunick. Any discussion? No, thank you, Ed. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that is approved. Item 8B is committee recommendations recommended by Mayor Bedeau, Mayor Bedeau.
So we said that we would have some recommendations for you at this meeting, and I have four for you. I have a recommendation for the Charter Commission, that is Andrew Shipe. Also for the Charter Commission, Ms. Jan Lambert. For the HRA, Mr. Wayne Erickson, and for the TAC, Jan Lambert, as well.
Move approval, the full slate, Johnson.
Second.
We have a motion by Chairman Johnson, second by Pritchett, any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion is approved, welcome aboard. Item 8C is a call for applicants. The mayor has some to recommend, Mayor Bedeau.
Yeah, so if you would like to hear your name voted for in a roll call, you can join us here at the city. We have plenty of applications available on the website, www.cibrainerm.n.us. The following are terms that we have available, and I'm going to try and read through the ones that we just appointed, so bear with me just a little bit. Cable TV Advisory Committee, we have one term expiring 2022. The Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. And also, the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2021. That is expiration of 9/7 of that year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we have one that I recommend, and that's the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission. There's one term open, expiring in 2023, as well as the Water Tower Committee does have two positions available. Item nine, new business discussion on the rental property maintenance code. I don't know if, this says it's under David Chansky, but I asked to have it on there.
Would you like to pick it up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, and, but I understand you may, you may know more about what this committee's been doing. So I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Okay.
Just to be prepared. I asked this to be on the agenda. If you may recall, we had a lot of citizen inquiry into conduct on premises, particularly regarding rental dwellings. At the time, we had some very sad and difficult situations right here in North Brainerd, which ended in the, in the death of a citizen and the near death of another. The citizens in and around that facility said, what, what, what happened here? And is this in any way the responsibility of the landlord? In other words, does the conduct of the, of the tenant, is it reflecting on the landlord and is there anything that can be done to prevent this in the future? I asked this to go on the city council, and the council at the time denied that and sent it to a committee. Well, that was three years ago, and we still had no response to those questions. I asked this to be put on the, on the council to see if we could have another vote as to whether those simple questions, can the landlord be held responsible for conduct on premises? And that's kind of a loaded legal question, and if so, what are the consequences? This went to a committee, they have a report today, and I want to make sure we get that report and thank them for their work, but I'm not sure that it answers those two questions. So, I want you to think about whether that's a council question. I always thought it was, and I think the fact that it's taken three years to get to this point just exemplifies my, my point, in that the council is more designed to make those policy questions, then it would go to a committee to craft how it should happen, okay? It went the other way based on the motion of the council. So this committee has been working on these, but I'm not sure they have been working on the two questions that were asked by over probably 100 citizens here that night in January three years ago. Mr. Chansky, what has the committee been doing?
So, I can take that, Mr. President, and I'm going to hand it over to Mike O'Day, short, not Mike, Mike DuVall, shortly, who is a member of that committee, is also the chair of the Planning Commission, and a landlord himself, so he sees this from multiple different angles, and he's going to walk through more specifically exactly where the committee has been, where they are now, what they feel like the needs left to be done. But I do want to address your first two questions first. The ordinance actually currently does address conduct on premises, that's in section 425 2020, which is in your packet. It outlines a specific process. First, it discusses what is considered a conduct on premises, or a prohibited conduct on premises. Then it goes through the process by which the Brainerd Police Department enforces the above regulations. You can see there's, it happens, generally it's informed of by the police department, because they have to respond to a call. They determine that one of the above prohibited actions has taken place, and then they go through the process to notify the landlord. Landlord has to do a written management plan, and there's timeline over the course of this process. Eventually, it all ultimates, the ultimate result, if there continues to be issues on a property, is the Brainerd Police Department, so the termination of the license premises has been disorderly in manner, as described in section, subsection A, shall be made, but substantial evidence to support such determination. It goes, the Brainerd Police Department makes a recommendation to the city council on what to do regarding the rental license for that property. That's what the process is in now. Chief Bestel, I believe, is joined virtually as well, so he could, if you would like, could probably speak to what the police department does today. Otherwise, Mr. DuVall is present and can speak to kind of what the committee has discussed in relation to updating this language to be more effective.
Let's let them both, let's let them both, I think this is a fairly serious issue, at least it was at the time. Chief Bestel, Acting Chief Bestel, anything you wish to add as to what our ordinance says or how the police department processes this, this issue?
Yes, Mr. President, that's exactly right, what, what David just covered in the ordinance. We do follow that. I think that part of this reckoning was, you know, years ago, when that tragedy had occurred and we were behind the gun, and I'll actually be honest with you, how we were doing our, our covering of that. We have increased that, we have
We have increased that, we have our whole staff involved with it now, written management plans in place. And I think a lot of the discussion in the committee that they're having is, is exactly, what does a written management plan look like? How do we hold the licensee accountable? And looking at the timeline of the violations, which is very spelled out in our ordinance, and we follow that. So, I think we're in a good place right now. I'm anxious to hear what the committee has, has come back with specifically on the written management plan of how we hold the license individual accountable for any disorderly use of the, of the, of the conduct of, of the property.
Thank you. Any questions of the chief before we, okay, thank, thank you. We may need to come back to you. Mike DuVal, are you with us?
I am. Good evening, Mr. President and council members. I can give you an update on where we are on the, on this section on conduct of premise. This work group has been working broadly on the entire Section 425, including some of the recommendations that this council has acted on regarding adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code earlier this year. So that's part of that overall review of the code. But specific to the conduct on premises, it's our, it's our action item for Wednesday of, of this week to complete that section and be able to hand a finalized version of that over to staff for review and, and action forward on that. Couple of highlights from that, part of it is some organizational details, but an addition to the conduct where there are problematic properties, the, the current ordinance basically addresses where a particular rental unit will have recurring citations over, over a course of time, say 12 months period, and that is sort of the action trigger for whether a license is suspended or revoked or not renewed. But the discussion in the group is that recognizing that there are instances where a, a, you may not have recurring problems at a particular unit, but a, a building may have a number of recurring citations on conduct, and so we tried to give some attention to how we might be able to use the management plan that the Acting Chief had described to bring compliance and to bring responsibility back to the property owner and property manager in that way. So, it's our intention to finish that work up at, at the end of our meeting on Wednesday and be able to hand the draft over. More broadly, we've provided a pretty complete review of the licensing section of that, more recently paying particular attention to the way, terms have been referenced in various ways, rentals and dwellings and so forth, and making sure we're consistent in that. So at this time, you know, that feels a little bit more work there, and then also trying to record now the International Property Maintenance Code that is now replacing the section that goes. That's where this group is at. There, there's probably, you know, anywhere from three to four more semi-monthly meetings to clean up that, that remaining work after this, the coming week. Mr. Chair, Mr. President?
Thank you. I, I do have a couple of questions for you, Mike, but I'll ask if anybody else does. Okay. Mike, it seems like you have a grasp of the issue, and the issue that these citizens brought before us is, you know, do the actions of the, of the landlord or the actions of the tenants reflect on the landlord? These changes that you're proposing, my two questions are, when do you think we'll see them? And the second question is, are you confident that we're going to have a good working ordinance that protects everybody, everybody around some of these properties to the best of our ability? Mike?
That would, that would certainly, I think, be our hope. You know, that partly is determined by, you know, I think the city attorney review of some of the ideas that are encompassed in this as well. So, you know, I'm not the attorney on this. I think the group has worked in good state towards that end. So I think, you know, when we hand this last to staff, you know, that, that, I presume would be their, their goal would be to ensure that we're doing the best that we can to address those issues. We feel that we're doing that, Mr. President?
Okay, and, and the other question was the when? You know, it's been-
The when for the conduct and premise would be, again, I think at the, the end of business or our meeting Wednesday morning, you know, we would probably have whatever final keystrokes on, on the document need to be done, and then that would be handed off. So it's reasonable to say that by the end of the week, we'd have the conduct and premise, premises in the hands of staff.
Okay. You can understand, Mike, how certain citizens might feel three years was enough.
Yeah.
All right, I get that, okay. I don't have anything else. I can't wait to, I can't wait to see what you guys come up with. Anybody else? All right, thank, thanks, Mike Bestel, Chief, Acting Chief Bestel, and Mike DuVal for all your hard work. Thank you. That's just a discussion item. Item 9B is the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1514, repealing Section 905 and amending Section 1400 of the City Code. City Administrator Bergman recommends to dispense with the actual reading. So the first thing on, we're going to do is hold a public hearing on this proposed ordinance And if anybody's on, online and wishes to speak to this, please, what do they do, Sean? Star six? Star six allows you to, it's like raising your hand, and you get to speak on this ordinance. This is the City Tree Inspector Ordinance. Anybody, Sean?
Nobody's raising their hand or unmuted, no.
All right. So, we will close the public hearing. Any testimony or alternatives? Seeing none, we'll want to look for a motion to hold the final reading.
Move to hold the final reading.
Second.
And dispense with the actual reading. Motion, Pritchett, second. Gabe Johnson. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Oh, he's muted.
I see him saying-
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, then we're looking for a motion to adopt ordinance 1514.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Stingline.
I'll second it.
Second by Pritchett. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Wait, I was muted, sorry. Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that ordinance is adopted. Item 9C, public hearing and resolution approving a project by Horizon Health and consenting to the issuance of tax-exempt obligations by the city of Pierce, Minnesota. I will open the public hearing at 8:09 and ask if there's anybody in the room or online who wishes to speak to this, this project. You would hit star six, will allow you in to speak. Star six. Hearing none, we will close.
We got one.
We got one. Yes, caller, if you want-
Good evening, this is Chris Verda from the Freiberger Lot Firm. I'm the one that prepares the resolution, so I'm available to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chris was your name?
Yes.
Thank you for, for calling in. The public hearing is still open, but I'm not seeing anything, Chris, so thanks for coming in. We will close the public hearing at 9:10, and-
Adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yeah.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion is, and ordinance is adopted. Next up is the public forum. This is the time allocated for any citizen to bring forth anything they want to that's not on the agenda. And we'll give you a couple of minutes, and how you get in to this is you hit star six, and it's like raising your hand digitally, and our IT Director, Sean, will let you in. So, the public forum is open. This is your chance. If there's something we're not addressing tonight, please let us know. Anybody?
Here we go.
Hello?
Yes, welcome caller. Well, please state your name and your address, so we know who you are.
My name is Chris Carlberg. I live out at 15298 Woodrow Road in Brainerd, just out of town a little bit. The reason I'm calling in today is about a ticket that I got in downtown, and I just, I think it might be somewhat of a safety concern. I backed into a diagonal parking space, and I received a ticket the next day, and there was a ticket for backing into a diagonal parking space. I didn't know that that was city ordinance, and I talked to multiple people, no one else knew that was either. One of my concerns, though, is that I've taken multiple safety courses for my work, I work for Center Point in Town, and there's the Smith Driving System, and something that they promote is, if you have to back in, or if you have to park, you should either pull through, but if you can't pull through, it's better to back into your parking space, because 25% of accidents occur while people are backing up. And if you're going to, but if you're going to back up, if you have to, pull into a parking space, it's best to back into your parking space. There weren't no signs up anywhere, and I talked to the police chief as well, and he agreed with me that there weren't any signs up. So I would just like the ordinance to be reviewed. I don't think it's a great policy, and if it isn't repealed or changed, I would recommend that maybe a sign be put up in places where people can see that. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris, for calling in, but I gotta, I gotta ask you one more favor before you, before you log off. Can you call into City Hall tomorrow or early, as soon as you can after this meeting, so the, so staff can get your name and email address and telephone number, so we can follow up on this, so you make sure that we hear what you're saying? Can you do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Excellent, we appreciate your call. Thank you very much. Anybody else online that would like to give us something that, that we need to know? Anybody at all? All right, we will close the public forum at 8:14 and move on to what's next. Staff reports. So let's go online first. Sean, if you could bring us up the staff reports. I've got, oh, you're going too fast. Acting Police Chief Bestel, you're up. Anything you wish to add?
Yes, Mr. President, just submitting my monthly report, but one thing I wanted to highlight down there was something exciting for the organization. I created this, this kind of cliche here, but Bestel's Booyah Award here recently within our organization, and I was really looking for, for a way to recognize the outstanding work of our, of all of our staff. And so I, we do these Booyah nominations, and it's really, it's something that I thought was important to give the opportunity for people to recognize and appreciate our outstanding staff's work, whether it's in the community or whether it's in-house or where we're doing something special within the organization. And I was extremely proud, we had 13 nominations from all levels of our department, and, and ultimately, we decided at the supervisory level to recognize Officer Jay Personius and Drew Sabestra for the month of February on the inaugural award and for saving a life in Northeast Brainerd. So, just great kudos for those two officers for saving a life and the continued appreciation and recognition of our great staff at the police department. So, just wanted to highlight that.
Chief, would you repeat those names one more time?
Yes, Officer Jay Personius and Officer Drew Sabestra.
Excellent, thank you, guys. Anything else, Chief?
I have nothing else, Ed.
All right.
I have nothing else, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Acting Chief Bestel. HR Director Schubert, anything you wish to add?
Just that we'll be bringing some information about the American Rescue Plan and how it affects employment at the next meeting on April 5.
Excellent, and Eric Sharptier from the HRA, anything from you today?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President, thank you.
Excellent, we'll run around the room. David Chansky?
Mr. President, just want to give the council an update regarding the sign ordinance. It will be re-up on the agenda for the Planning Commission for review this Wednesday during the regular meeting at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Excellent, thank you, David. You know, I skipped Scott Magnuson, who's online. Anything from the PUC?
He's probably here for the closed meeting.
Yeah, probably here for the closed meeting. Okay, Paul Sandy, engineer?
My only update is that our Name a Snowplow initiative is up on the city website and on our Facebook page. There's a Survey Monkey link to submit your responses. We received, I think, like 75 up till today, so that's naming eight pieces of equipment 75 times, so we have a lot of names to consider, so we're going to be most likely setting up a subcommittee of some sort to-
I volunteer.
-par those down to something that's more manageable. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Engineer Sandy. Finance Director Hillman?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Anything from the legal department?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Wicklandang from PZ to add? All right. Administrator Bergman?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Just a few updates. First of all, just a discussion on the sesquicentennial. So I had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Badoe and also Mary Divine Johnson to start talking about the sesquicentennial and next steps. This group has identified September 18th to the 25th as that sesquicentennial celebration week. The chamber has offered to do a time capsule on the 18th, and also the intent would be to have the sesquicentennial kickoff event be done with a proclamation from the mayor, which would start that week, week-long celebration. So we're asking a couple of things. I know we're going to be asking the park board if they would be willing to do some kind of picnic, reaching out to other community partners to see what they would be willing to do, and also maybe looking at a potential other ribbon-cutting events, maybe the splash pad, maybe Memorial Park, if those are things that can be done within that week. So just stay tuned. I am sure you saw that the mayor had unveiled the 150th banner or logo that he had done, also looking at the potential of having those be banners on our light poles. So just wanted to at least let you know that we're working on that and to stay tuned. And just a big thank you to the mayor and Mary Divine Johnson with Visit Brainerd, who really have started to, to help kind of coordinate this effort. Also, talking about holiday lights, I know there's been some discussion about what downtown Brainerd would like to see with holiday lights. They're starting early. So starting to talk about those in March, so maybe we have a plan come November. And then last but not least, today I think you did get an email from Charter on the franchise fee, and just wanted to let you know that we are working on that. We actually asked Charter to give us an estimate in July of what the cost would be to extend that from, as you know, when the high school did their remodel project, it took out our connection that gave us, gave us the ability to broadcast on the PEG channel. So we asked Charter for an estimate in July, they did give us that in December. We have had one cable TV advisory committee to start those discussions. We did talk about this a little bit with Chair- We did talk about this a little bit with Chair Johnson from Chair of PNF. And so, we're gonna separate these two items. We have a meeting scheduled with Joe Langle tomorrow to go over those franchise fee agreements, and we hope to have that on the April 5 city council agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you, you know, I didn't mean to skip you, Sean. Anything from the IT GIS department?
Nothing to add tonight, no.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor Bedeau.
Oh, boy. All right, all right, all right. First of all, Acting Chief Bestel, I just want to say that I love the award that you've created. However, we gotta make you say, "Booyah!" You gotta say it, every time. Mandate, "Booyah!" There we go, all right, we're off to a good start. Just two items from the mayor tonight. I know you, you're thinking it's gonna be a long one, it's gonna be short. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the downtown businesses, as well as patrons. St. Patrick's Day celebration was this last Saturday, I don't know if any of you were able to attend. Obviously, no parade, trying to have a little bit more low-key celebration, but people were out in groups and shopping and having a good time. It was very enjoyable, and it was good to see families out and about, and good to see people starting to get back to normal life a little bit, and was very enjoyable. Just a little heads up, the businesses are doing Pot of Gold Days, which is an opportunity to get some savings on purchases. That's continuing through St. Patrick's Day, which is this Wednesday, the 17th. You may have noticed as well, the water tower has been illuminated in Irish green for the celebration as well. That will be continuing through this Wednesday. Also, I had the opportunity to speak at the deployment ceremony for the National Guard soldiers, the Task Force 1-194. That was just this last, was it two weekends ago? I'm forgetting now my time, time is flying. Great, great event, and I will tell you that I'm not a person that is intimidated by any means in walking into that room and seeing the soldiers and the situation that you're looking at. Very intimidating situation. First of all, very giant human beings, very large human beings. I'm not a short man, I felt very, very short in that room. But, just a great opportunity to speak and just thank them on behalf of the city and on behalf of the community. Very, very touching to see that interaction, you know, and to see the people that are leading our troops into services is fantastic, so I was very happy to be a part of that. But, the reason why I bring it up, we have, I received an email from Brigadier General Cruz, and while we were there, he spoke with us, or spoke with me, and said that they would be interested in having myself and the council come down and have a meeting there with a little bit of overview of the camp, and then a tour of the camp. And there were some fun things mentioned, so I won't say what those fun things were, because I don't want to have, I'm not putting words into anyone's mouth, but fun things were mentioned.
Is it artillery?
I'm not gonna say that the big pieces of equipment were not mentioned, but big pieces of equipment were mentioned by someone, I don't know if they had the power to mention that or not. However, they had sent an email over to me, I forwarded that to Jennifer, she's gonna forward it to the rest of you. They're looking for a date that something might work for the council. I think it'd be a great opportunity. That is a wonderful piece of property, and when you're there, the size of it is just impressive, so. I'm pushing that forward to Jennifer, if we can coordinate and find a time to go do that, that would be fantastic. End of report.
Thank you, Mayor Bedeau, Mike O'Day?
Eighty-five and sunny, every day. It's been a, it's been a, last few days.
Dad Erickson?
The TAC met this past Thursday, we took action on the RFP, so I won't go into that. Planning Commission meets this upcoming Wednesday, and Northland Arboretum the following Thursday. I'll be at all of them.
Thank you, Tiffany Stingline?
Yeah, so, the sesquicentennial meeting, I just want to let folks know that I expect we'll be asking for money at the next meeting with a dollar amount, so.
Well, that escalated quickly. Yeah. They want a chain-link fence. Gabe, they want a chain-link fence.
That's it.
That's it.
That's all.
Three feet of it, that's it. Thank you, Tiffany, Dave, Pritchett?
All right, a couple of quick things. One, the maple sap is running, so if you want to get out there and enjoy the woods, it's awesome. Two, the library is hoping to open up limited grab-and-go quick browsing service soon. They were hoping for the 17th, I don't know if that's on schedule, I sent out an email, haven't heard back yet, so. That's all I got, but that's, they're both great news. Oh, and spring does not start until the street cleaners go down the streets of Brainerd, just saying, so. No sightings as of yet.
And they're not moving until they're named, so. Yeah, Kevin, Stunick?
I spent the afternoon downtown on Saturday, and it was wonderful.
Thank you, Gabe Johnson?
Yeah, I too was downtown on Saturday and took the kids, and you know, it was a bummer there wasn't a parade, but that's what 2021 is, but the scavenger hunt that Mayor Bedeau put together was, I think it was nine hidden water towers all through downtown with some clues that we had to go and find them, and it was, it was perfect for, like, my eight-year-old son. Couldn't find him, needed clues everywhere, but it was easy for me to find, so I didn't get frustrated. Mayor gave me the answers.
But, it was fun, and it was a good family event, and I saw a lot of people downtown shopping and partaking in the celebration, even if the parade was a little illegal this year.
Thank you, I have nothing to add. We are looking for a motion on item 14 to adjourn to a joint city council BPU commission closed session, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03, to discuss labor negotiation strategy, is there a motion to do such?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
All right. Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, we are moving into adjourned session, so if you're.